On to consider the motion received from councillors, we have motion seven A. Councillor McDougall, would you wish to speak to this motion?
So the motion is, this council endorses the plant-based treaty as inspired by the fossil fuel non-proliferation treaty initiative in 2021. So I could say a lot of things in support of a move towards a plant-based diet. But whilst some councillors have an aversion to this topic, or some many people do, I have an equal aversion to long meetings, so I'll keep it brief. I'm going to say a bit about CO2 emissions, but also diet and nutrition, as that is often cited as a reason to object to it. The most important, to me, the most important point is the CO2 emissions. Agriculture produces, and my figures are 10% of global CO2 emissions, that was on a recent radio programme about net zero. So agriculture must play its part, and we must too, and reduce demand for beef and lamb, especially if it is imported from other countries, and worse still, where rainforest is chopped down to produce it. Somerset County Council has reviewed the topic recently, citing a paper that shows the problem with methane or CO2 equivalent is half that originally stated in their Somerset climate emergency strategy. However, it still takes 16 times as much land to produce one calorie of animal product as it does for plants. I come from the psychological viewpoint, that's my background, so I say, let's just be a bit less greedy and get our dopamine fix that accompanies a good meal from other things. My favourite is oxytocin, which regulates dopamine and is stimulated by altruistic or pro-social behaviour, though that has now been shown to make us a little bit triable. I'm still in favour of oxytocin. So nutrition-wise, calcium and B12 deficiency are often cited as reasons we need meat. Regarding calcium, I will be careful with advice we are given, as need may be defined more by good marketing than accurate science. When it comes to B12, many vegetables, especially fermented and those still retaining natural healthy bacteria, contain B12, which is a good argument for fresh and local. Though I personally maintain it is easier to get what you need by eating occasional meat and dairy in your diet, i.e. reduced. The other one is iron. When I first studied this, I was astonished that one tablespoon of curry powder contains about 10% of an adult's daily dietary needs. So the Indian diet of rice and dal then makes perfect sense, compared to, say, chicken, where you get your full iron requirement from a two to four ounce portion, depending very much on the quality of the meat. Good quality meat can be 10 times richer in iron. And that's as far as I've got. So those are my arguments, and I'm sure Mike will follow up with any gaps in the argument. It's a very complex topic, and please support this motion, councillor.
Councillor Smack, do you wish to speak now or at the end of the debate?
I'd like to speak at the end of the debate.
Thank you very much. Councillors, are there any councillors wishing to speak against the motion? So councillor Cottle, and then councillor White.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, when I say against, I'm against the idea of this town council having this particular motion, because I don't think it's something that we should be discussing. But that's here or there. I'm a lifelong, practically a lifelong vegetarian, near enough a vegan, and the way, and I come from a farming background as well, so I'll be open about that, but I think that gradually over the years, more and more people have become and used a plant-based diet, and I don't think they need, I don't think they need to be indoctrinated by it. I think it will naturally come, and it's naturally going that way. So unfortunately, I disagree.
Thank you. Councillor White.
Thank you. So I have a number of concerns about it, sorry, I have a number of concerns about it. One is certainly this treaty seems very much about the westernised market, and so reducing that, which is a good thing, industrial consumerism, isn't taking us anywhere. So again, I would come for local stuff, local food, get rid of all the food miles.
What you do.
One of my biggest concerns is the military-industrial-agro-pharmaceutical complex, because I feel that they will capture, manipulate and control the food supply. Okay? So we think Monsanto, the GMOs, seeds not functioning, so they're engineered not to have a future crop, so that is a concern for me. Taxes, I'll mention that briefly, so a tax on meat and fish, I'll address fish in a moment, because it's actually quite important. So again, fits very much in a westernised mindset, and that isn't the reality in most of our planet. So the ocean, just as an example, four billion people, half of the world, rely on the ocean for their food supply. Okay? What do we in the West do? We dump 14 million tonnes of plastic a year into it, you know, and so that's all part of the fossil fuel industry and problem. My biggest concern, so Lindsay sort of touched on the sort of local things and the cycles, phosphate, nitrogen, things like that. So we know a good percentage of land, probably 25% of agricultural land, doesn't produce food, is habit. So we're putting in ever larger quantities of artificial fertilisers that has a major impact on what happens to the nutrient cycle. We also know for phosphorus and the problem on the Somerset moors and levels on our Ramsar sites, that we've even had to stop building houses because of what's happening with the phosphates. So I presume most of you haven't looked at planetary boundaries, and I wish you would. So the place to go in and look is Stockholm Resilience Centre, Stockholm University, and essentially, there are nine categories that have summed up all of the impacts of humanity. That includes climate change, nitrogen phosphate use, land use, freshwater use, ocean acidification, breaking the ozone layer, novel entities. So that includes plastics that don't exist in nature. In the centre of that glyph, and you can download it, is a safe operating space for humanity. We've exceeded five of those nine now. So what we're talking about, one of them that's just flipped, there's a paper this year, is about land use, so changing land use, and so we're asking again for even more land. Water, freshwater, freshwater is a major issue, again, just this month, I think, or last month, there's a new paper that we've exceeded the boundary on what we call green water, rather than blue water of the ocean. So we don't have that much water. The lady who presented did a very good one, so I'd like, looked at what happened in Pakistan as a very good example. Back at Easter time, they were expecting to be 30% under their water catchment, so they were heading for drought. Suddenly, as I mentioned last night, they got 30 years' rain in about two weeks, and a third of the country flooded, including Sih, which is the large agricultural producing place. So all of that has now gone. You know, so whatever we do, for me, it's very much about, we need to find a way of living in balance. If we go for like a global plant food supply, first off, to get those emissions down, all vehicles, processes, shipment, has to be carbon neutral. So that's the first sort of point inside that. So certainly, we need to stop shifting food all the way around the planet. I find it absolutely bizarre that I can go across the road from my house into Morrison's and buy a fresh coconut and a fresh mango. You know, I'm just going like, what? You know, for me, that is crazy. So grow local, eat seasonally, get rid of those food miles. For me personally, I like a balanced diet, I like meat, fish, shellfish, plants, fungi. One of the things I'm very worried about is if the law of unintended consequences, if we upset the food web. And so if you don't know what a food web is, it's that everything eats something, is eaten by something else. Okay? So that's just, that just puts it simply. So if we accidentally break that, then everything else starts to collapse. Traditional culture, so those who know me know that I've lived with indigenous people for a long time. We live very simply, we're part of the environment, we take what we need for the day, we don't waste. If something, say, the fish have gone or too small, we stop taking that species. An industrial fish, we can't, because they're profit-driven. So these are the things that really sort of concern me the most, is okay, we can charge down this road, say, yes, okay, we'll just eat plants. From my last 12 years in the Pacific, especially from 2019, ultraviolet and increased temperatures were stopping the pollen from fertilising. Okay? So increased UV, and the tomato, I had like plants in my garden, flowers everywhere, nothing would set to fruit, even if I had pollen. You know, and so the Western world hasn't yet got a clue of what's coming from down the other side of the planet. We're just coming up to a fourth or maybe fifth year of La Niña, which causes a whole load of other problems. So I would have a slightly different proposal, I'll read it, and maybe there'll be someone who seconds it, that this council supports those activities that bring humanity back into balance with our planet Earth and its own species.
Yeah, I'll second that.
So thank you. That, that, that isn't an amendment to this motion, but it is another motion. So we will continue to deal with this motion, and as your motion has been seconded, we will return to your motion, they're not mutually exclusive motions, they're just two different motions, if that's okay. I'm checking with the clerk to make sure that I am observing standing orders correctly.
I believe so, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. So councillors, I have councillor Muck.
Thank you, I'm broadly in agreement with the thrust of this proposal, and on more than one ground, and particularly because of, it makes mention of intensive farming, doesn't it? And I think that's something which is unsustainable on every level and morally wrong. And also, there's a risk, when you mistreat animals to that extent, and you concentrate them in huge numbers, this increasingly happens, the risk of disease, which then spreads to, that's a threat, spreading to humans. I believe in some countries, they give huge amounts of antibiotics to creatures that have got nothing wrong with them when they're born, in anticipation of the fact that because of the way they're treated, they might well have. So I think there's, you know, multiple reasons, part selfish, part moral for the animal's welfare, that all of that kind of intensive farming should be outlawed, and I'm very happy to support any motion that endorses that principle. I have read quite a lot recently about where more traditional methods, this is in Africa, where animals move from one area to another with migrating tribes, that it actually enhances the quality of the land. So I get that there is another angle of this, but it's not so much, not the case at all in the West, it's certainly particularly not in the United States. And I think, you know, at a time when we're talking about trying to do deals for food with the USA post-Brexit, which probably won't happen, but if we're even considering things like that, given their lower welfare standards, that any motion which obstructs that kind of tactic, I think, should be supported. The, for the free, free range, the land use, it seems to be an extraordinary, the disproportionate revelation to me, was it 80% of the land is used to raise animals on, and that only produces 18% of the food. So yeah, there's definitely a huge question there. And, you know, the answer to it, this horrible intensive farming, is not sustainable, and it's not moral, and it's not defendable on any, on any level. So free range is the way to go, blessedly, I'm a bit of a hypocrite, I still eat a bit of meat, but I have compromised by only eating free range. And my dog, being an equal partner in my house, has insisted that he only has free range. And so, to I hope the delight of somebody who I trust to produce genuinely free-range cell, genuinely free-range meat in this town, he is now free range as well, though not completely vegetarian, but he's a dog. And so, yeah, I certainly, I'm interested by the qualified proposal, but it's a bit of a veigar. I, you know, I'd give it my support, I like the idea that Glastonbury sends a message to the rest of the country and the world, that we have to move in this direction, which is, it's not as extreme as saying everybody's got to be a vegan, and there is still room for reasonable standards, but the flaky kind of pretence of free range, which the supermarkets propagate, are they just not free range? You've only got to look at the price, and you can see it can't be free range, it wouldn't be viable. So for Jack the Hound and myself, it's free range only, and that's the way we've got to go.
Thank you. Councillor Henderson.
There's a lot in this treaty that I would agree with. For you, those of you who don't know me, I've got a butcher shop in Glastonbury. I appall the kind of mass farming that is proliferating, especially in the US, but is obviously moving elsewhere, thousands upon thousands of head of cattle inside massive buildings. You know, I've been a butcher in Glastonbury since 85, I had a shop on Wymer Hill, and now I've got a shop in the town, and we have always striven to deal in free-range local produce. I know all the farmers that we deal with, they're all within probably a 10-mile radius of the shop. We know how the animals are reared, we know that the farms are well looked after, and they're not using a massive amount of fertiliser on the ground, they use animal fertilisers. And I would hate for that sort of tradition or that kind of industry to sort of go under, under what is, there's a broad brush in this treaty here, which I can't agree with all of it, I'm afraid. You know, although Glastonbury has changed over the years, become a spiritual centre, a tourist town, we are still essentially a farming community. You know, a lot of my customers, a lot of the people I know farm in some way, either arable or in the livestock business. And, you know, this, this part of the world, and, you know, England, British Isles in general, are farmers, you know, we need to protect that. And I think that I agree with, I mean, Michael's scientific approach is fascinating, and I would agree with that 100%. And Ian, as a customer of mine, you know, he comes from where I'm talking about, it's free range, it's, you know, animal welfare, it's small businesses, it's farmers caring for what, about what they do. So, although I agree with a lot of this, I can't vote in favour of it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Thank you, councillor.
Well, speaking as an ex-farmer's wife, I can probably have a lot more interest in farming than many people around this table. The big problem is that we are driven by cheap food, the demand for cheap food, and that has reduced the farming, in farming community into a machine. My husband was a farmer, an organic farmer, and we raised our own animals, we knew the names of all our animals, that it was more of a pet farm than a farm. But that said, there is a cycle in nature that you cannot disrupt without problems, and that cycle includes animals. And if you look at this treaty, which seems to be so, so plant-based, you're not giving anybody any choice, and people do require choice, it is important for people to have a balanced diet, any nutritionist or person will tell you, it's important for people to have a balanced diet. One of my friends who is anaemic, as I am myself, had to go to a doctor recently, because she was very poorly, and he said, I'll give you a choice, you can have three weeks of injections, or you can go home and eat a steak. She went home and ate a steak, and felt better immediately. So there are fors and againsts to this, but I would come down, I haven't got the experience that Mike has got, I certainly haven't got the experience, knowledge, but I have got the experience of working with animals and looking at different farms. The way to go is small farms, we care for their animals, who can produce food, we can no longer produce food to feed ourselves in this country, and we must stop, we must stop selling farmland off for houses. When the last fish is fished, and there is nowhere to go, you cannot eat a house brick. We have to understand that we are part of this world, and part of that world means that we have to be balanced. We have to look after our animals, animals that are looked after thrive. Plants will survive, whatever you do to a plant, there are 13, I think, plants go back, 13,000 years and still come back and survive. Right here, in Glastonbury, we are one small market town, we must support our farmers. What are you going to do with the cows? Put them in zoos? What are you going to do with the sheep? Put them in zoos? We need to have a balanced diet, we need to have sheep, we need to have animals around, and we need to have them cared for and looked after. And when it comes to the end of their life, their life must be ended as painlessly as possible. So I don't believe I can support this, because it is so one-sided. I don't like being dictated to, and I won't be dictated to, and I do, but I do think that we have to look at things in moderation. That is my argument for this, that yes, please, Mike is exactly right, if we stick to the seasons, if we stick to the food that we produce, if we understand that animals are reared, they fertilise the land, we don't need fertilisers if animals fertilise the land. You know, you've only got to look at something like the River Nile, when they built the reservoir, up till that point, the Nile had flooded, and it had brought with it nutrients down, and nobody needed fertiliser, because the Nile brought it to them. They stopped the Nile, they created the dam, which was vital as well. Now every farm in Egypt uses fertilisers, and some of them are not very nice fertilisers, you know? Animal fertilisation is best. So I would say, as the Greeks said, everything in moderation is the best way to go, but please remember that farmers have to earn a living, they have children as well, and the majority of farmers, I think, here in the West Country, are exactly the farmers that look after their animals, they're small farmers, they farm in an old-fashioned way, not in, you go, if you go to the east, you'll get the great land barons, the great, the great fields upon fields upon fields of corn, which is mainly crops which have been fertilised by artificial fertiliser, and they are now creating bread, and that bread's not good for you. We need to get back, we need to understand that we humans are only a very, very small part of this, of the world, and we need to live in harmony with both plants, and with people, and with animals, otherwise, we're finished. So, sorry to go, but that is my personal feeling, so I'm sorry, I can't support this. If it was a more balanced view, I might think about it, but I can't support, you know, unless you can tell me, what are you going to do with all the sheep you're going to get rid of, and all the cows you're going to get rid of, and all the goats you're going to get rid of, and all the chickens you're going to get rid of. Are they going to go in zoos? What are you going to do? We must have a balance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Don Francesca?
Yes, was I next? Is there anybody else?
Speaking against.
Well, you're speaking.
Councillor Lockbandy wanted to speak.
Thank you. Councillor Don Francesca, and then Councillor Wandy, and then councillor Smack.
Okay, thank you. No, I just thought I had to speak at this point. Am I for it against? As a person in Glastonbury or living on this planet, I am totally all for it. As a councillor, I have questions. I know some of those answers, I'm not sure actually, a lot's been explained. I'm all for this, because it is the right thing to do as humans, we are totally in a climate emergency. Animals, the intensity of farming of animals is, it's an extreme at the moment, so it needs an extreme answer. So whether we, you know, whether we think about it in short term or long term, it's an extreme thing that needs an extreme answer. But the whole, sorry, the reason I wanted to stand up, as fellow councillor mentioned, nothing's going to happen overnight, I can't see this. My big question was, how does this actually translate practically? You know, what does it actually mean to be plant-free? It's like, we're a frack-free town, or we're a plastic-free town, yet we still have plastic. I think a lot of what this is, is actually about putting our weight behind something that, that should happen, that is a good idea. I don't, it's, how it's going to translate to local people, how it's going to translate to farmers, I think there was a lot that hasn't been explained in subsidies. So there was a, there was an idea, a houses project, they're not literally just coming in to sound like everyone has to eat up meat. It's not a case of suddenly the sheep have to disappear out of the fields or the cows, it's, it's an idea, it's a concept, it's of putting ourselves behind something, saying, hey, it's a transition, and I think it's the transition bit that we're missing here. I don't think we're going to start pushing, you know, our farmers in the jibbit, it's not like that. This is literally moving into, and it's the same as, you know, as our local butcher, you know, we do actually like to think about things in a better way in this town, and I think this is literally putting our weight behind something that needs to be done. We have, in Bolton, for I know it's not here, but there's a farmer there I just equated, he's got a huge industrial unit, he's one of the biggest landowners there, he's got an industrial unit where his cows never see daylight, and the rest of the few hundred acres are with the maize, which feeds the cows, and the maize is one of the most industrially, well, crippling things to lands that you can do. So those are the kind of things that hopefully we'll be putting out information. We already have, in this town, we've started the Five Mile Food Project, which I think, you know, can link into this, we've also got, you know, the new cookery network, there's so much work, all this means, all this will mean, is that we are putting our weight behind something that is a good idea, and that a transition can maybe start happening. They do talk about subsidies, it was very, very briefly mentioned, that in subsidies, there's massive subsidies given to farmers, it is, you know, as an industry, it would have come out of business years ago. And what they're talking about with the transition is moving those subsidies into more of an agricultural, or as there's a new word around, agroecological, equals?
Agroecological.
Thank you. Agroecological way of doing things, which is what we should be about. So it's brave, it's bold, and it's going to get a lot of misinformation. I don't want to put one minute not, you know, that there are local farmers that they're not going to get support for, you know, that they are some narrow dirty word, this is such a bad transition. And it's, you know, as somebody mentioned, one of the councillors mentioned, it's naturally going that way anyway, so why not be bold and be a little bit upfront about it? Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to say.
Could you just ask me a question?
To, to a?
I know I'm not allowed to speak, is it possible to ask a question today?
Are you asking a question of a particular councillor or the council in general?
Well, you're, you're both as councillors, is, whilst the plant-based treaty is, a lot of it is commendable, it's deep, a lot of the points are commendable, I've read a lot about it over the last week or so, a lot of those principles are commendable, for our town, is it not an individual's freedom of choice, not the council's mandate, which they then, they sort of adopt it, it should be the council's mandate to adopt it, on every president's behalf, because on their website, they're saying you can adopt it as an individual, or a business, or a group, or a town, whoever. So we should... So we should, should we not be thinking about adopting it as a town? Leave it up to people's freedom of individual choice? Because that's what every, every individual should have, freedom of choice. And then, any person and any person in your electorate that comes in the town should be making that individual choice? So we shouldn't be down to whoever's elected here to be making that choice? We, we as individuals of your beautiful town should be making that choice? And it shouldn't be a therapist that you're making that decision? We, our country is all going towards this anyway. Where as we're getting more informed, we're all, all trying to make a difference and trying to be more environmentally friendly and be more aware of the climate and the things, the decisions we make and do that and try and make a better difference. But it should be the council making that?
So if I may respond? No, well, thank you. And obviously, this is quite an emotive subject in many ways. The council in its past have passed motions against or for various things. There are motions which are the intent of the council. So for instance, I think a long time ago, there was a motion passed way before I was on the council against nuclear power, when they were first building Hinkley Point. I don't know whether anyone older on the council I looked to, my esteemed colleague here remembers that, but was certainly explained to me when I first came on the council that that happened. And there are many people in the town, I'm sure, who feel that nuclear power isn't a bad thing. But the council took that decision before I was on it. More recently, this is my esteemed colleague here and I passed a motion that Glastonbury was against fracking. Councillor Cottle put it forward, I seconded that. The council took a stand saying that it is against fracking. There are many people in the town who possibly think fracking isn't a bad idea, particularly in light of all the things that are happening in Russia and, and the way that that is impacting on, on that. But it's a council's point of view. More recently, again, we declared climate emergency. Now, there are many people in this town who believe that the climate emergency is a hoax and that it's not something that is even worth thinking about. But as a council, the council took that decision. We became a council that would be plastic-free. But there are many people still in the town who wish to use plastic. And that was single-use plastic-free motion. We also passed a motion to become an earth-protector town, which was to lobby for ecocide to be considered as an international crime. Now, there are probably people in the town who don't agree with that either. And none of those things that we've passed in the past have stopped the individuals of the town having their own beliefs and holding their own power in what they think. It's just a, a way of the council showing a general trend towards something. And I think that invariably, we're possibly on the right side of history within those things. Again, more recently, we declared ecological emergency. Again, there are many people in this town, I know they come in and tell me very close to my face how wrong we are in even believing that there is an ecological emergency or that climate change is a complete hoax. But it's a position that the council have ta, has taken. The plant-based treaty is around tackling climate change. It's not about getting a big stick and hitting farmers. My, I myself grew up on a dairy farm. So I, I know exactly how farming is in this country. It was in Wiltshire, it wasn't in Somerset, but I, I know about that. I know about the way that small farmers and tenant farmers have, have really been up against it, totally aware of that. This isn't about getting a big stick and hitting those people. It's about looking at the wider picture. And we've already talked about the factory farming and the way that, that we are producing food to meet the high need of this, in this world. That's the focus, I believe, that the debate is about. And it's very interesting for us to hear, as you can see, not all councillors are in favour of this, even around the table. But at some point, at some point in a world where really we're heading towards 1.5 degrees above pre-industrial levels of, of carbon, will, you will not recognize the world you're in. And we're already there, it's just taking time for it to happen. But if you think about the disasters, natural disasters that are happening, look at the hurricane that came into America recently, look at what's happening around the world. That is, that is 1.5 for sure by 2030. If we're talking about two degrees by 2040 above pre-industrial levels, we are in a catastrophe. So this is why I believe the councillors who put forward this motion have put the motion forward. It's about hoping for the council itself to send a message, if it does, to the wider community that this is an important thing to consider. And it's to endorse a treaty that sits alongside other treaties that the European Union, et cetera, and, and other governments in the world have taken onto account. So it's not about this council telling everybody else what to do. And if, if we, if it's come across like that, I do apologize because that is not-
I agree with that, when you read the demands in the, in the literature and on the website, it reads very much like a dictatorship. And some of it sounds quite dangerous to our rural economy and, and businesses and that in, in the area. And by choice, and that's how it comes across to me as a lady person that doesn't want to get rid of it.
Yes.
And as a member of the community.
I totally hear what you're saying.
I worry about that. Even though I worry about our climate as well.
I, I have worried about the plight of our farming community, the local farmers, the small farmers, the tenant farmers. Believe me, I worry about that a great deal. And it's, it's something that is in crisis, you know? And that's something else that this council, I hope, will look to support, how we can support our local agricultural system at some point. But I, 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 if the council passes or doesn't pass this motion, it's not going to impact on every person in this town will suddenly have to stop eating so much meat. It's, it doesn't, this council doesn't have the authority for that, as you quite rightly point out. This is about whether or not the council itself wishes to endorse a, a treaty that is a worldwide sort of movement. And so that's where we're at. But I do thank you for your question, it's extremely useful. And I hope that that's cleared that up in, in some way.
Sorry, Mr. Councillor.
Yeah. There are many mayors who have never wanted anyone from the community to speak at meetings. I'm afraid I'm not one of those. I'm very happy for the community to speak at meetings. Thank you for what you said. So councillors, I seem to have lost where we were at, but I think that Lockabandu, you were going to be next?
Yes, thank you. Clearly it's an emotive issue and we'll see how the votes fall. I've listened to people with interest, their different opinions. I take all the points, but I'm not sure they are all relevant to the actual vote. So for instance, councillor White says we should be local and seasonal. Completely agree, but that's not, not going to be with this treaty at all. Councillor Oakden says we should have a balanced diet. Completely agree. I've been a vegan for 10 years and enjoy luckily excellent health. Councillor Butler says we shouldn't be in this business endorsing treaties anywhere. I would disagree. I don't think we're telling people what to do in some authoritarian way. We're kind of suggesting what we feel is the way forwards, which I would endorse. And I don't think we're anti-farming at all. I think we are encouraging farmers to use their land in a different way. The future is changing, we might as well face it. I could bring out more points to be made, but that's all I said.
Thank you. So councillor McDougall, I, I feel you have the right to reply to something that's been said.
On foot for the day this morning, a very relevant, pertinent comment on freedom and, and the right to freedom. And, and it was where one person's freedom ends, another person's begins. So this is about climate change and it, it won't really impact us first, though it does with catastrophic weather events in the Western world. It impacts the poorer countries like Pakistan massively. So yes, you may say we should have freedom of choice, but it has consequences elsewhere. So I would just point that out, that we should have some compassion for the people who it is going to affect when we make our choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other councillors who haven't spoken who wish to speak to this? So councillor Smythe, in, as the second, did you wish to speak now?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. For this, all of your contributions, especially to councillor Lockabandu for his summary, very eloquent summary of what this, the purpose of this treaty. And I think everybody's concerns around this table are actually allocated for within this treaty because it isn't, doesn't totally exclude the eating of meat as long as it's locally sourced and sustainably farmed, without the use of pesticides, herbicides or intensive factory farming methods and with high animal welfare standards. That, that sort of thing is implicit in the move towards because this is, this treaty aims to halt the widespread degradation of critical ecosystems, such as those in the rain, Annes and Rainforests, such as those that are supporting mass production of supermarket meat. And it's a move towards, a shift towards a healthier, sustainable, plant-based diet. It does not exclude the eating of meat, especially when it's locally sourced. It's free range, everything else has been said around this table. I'd like to quote also, thank you mayor for your contribution, the Deputy Lord Mayor of Bristol recently quoted with regard to this treaty that we must act now if we have any hope of limiting the impact of climate change. We all need to play our part and the hard-hitting reality is if we cannot continue with the business, we cannot continue with a business-as-usual attitude. We can all make changes in a small way. And one such change is moving away from the meat-based diet towards a plant-based one. Now that, again, does not exclude one or the other, is moving towards. Another quote I'd like to make, just to finalize, if I can drag this down, is from Dr Richard Nicholson, who was a councillor for Haywards Heath. We've heard him, Haywards Heath mentioned earlier on, in the south-east of England. And he said of this, he said, "We've endured the highest ever summer temperatures in history and people's properties have been destroyed by fire and flood. We cannot wait for governments, we must all act immediately and moving towards a plant-based diet," as again, moving towards, "is the most impactful thing any individual can do to help address the grave situation we face. I'd encourage all town, district, county and metro councils to sign the plant-based treaty immediately." And that, that comes from councillor for Haywards Heath, believe his concerns. But anyway, I do, I do implore everybody around this table to think carefully and vote in favour of this treaty because we will be showing a good example to the rest of the country in the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much for summing up. So we have a motion in the table, councillors. The motion to consider is this council endorses the Plant-Based Treaty as inspired by the Fossil Fuel Non-Pollification Treaty Initiative in 2021. All those in favour?
I have that as seven, your worship.
Thank you. All those against?
I have that as nine, your worship.
Thank you. The motion is not carried. Thank you very much. So we now have a second motion, which is on the table. Councillor White, would you like to read your motion again?
This council supports those activities that bring humanity back into balance with our planet Earth and its other species.
Can we have a second?
Yeah, I'm seconding.
Thank you very much. I don't know whether we wish to speak to this motion. Is there something you wish to add to it as the proposer?
The only, well, the, the, the big bugbear with general human activities is perpetual war. You know, so we just go on and on, funding both sides. And so the emissions from that rarely get mentioned. They do in a few places, but not often. But for me, I would support activities that bring us back into balance. So the plant-based treaty would be one of those things.
Thank you.
As farmers.
And as the second, do you wish to speak now?
Uh, yeah, quickly because we're, we're running a bit late here. Uh, yeah, I, I would agree with Michael's idea because I think what we need to do is to return to the old-fashioned way to be farmed, where everything was in balance. And in the 1950s and 1960s, it didn't have an excessive use of fertilizers and you had a mixed, small mixed farms. In fact, I can remember when I was young here in Glastonbury, there were 25 dairy farms and all those families made a living out of that size of farm. Now you can't. We've got used to cheap food. You think it's expensive, but it's cheap muck, a lot of it. And the only way to do it is to go back to having, I was going to say it, more expensive. If you want to eat meat, you'll have to pay more money. And, but decent and real property, like Steve here as a butcher buys all of his meat locally. And I don't eat meat, but I do, I respect Steve for that. And I think that's the way we should go, smaller farmers.
Thank you, councillor McDougall.
I'll just briefly say, I will support this, but it, the point of the plant-based treaty is completely different. It's about reducing your meat intake and that's part of this. I don't understand why somebody supporting the balance is not going to support a reduction in meat. But I will support it.
Thank you. I, as a point of order, I have to hold up the meeting. As the clerk has informed me, that the votes tallied do not equal the number of councillors.
Well, that's what I was about to say.
So I would like to, as a point of order, ask the councillors who voted in favour to show their hands again and have a recorded vote so that the clerk can- And that is sixteen.
Your worship, if you'd like a recorded vote, could you read out members' surnames and I'll make a note? It's very difficult to do a recorded vote and count myself.
Well, councillors, if you have your hand up, can you say your name for the clerk to hear? And then put your hand down?
Mr Bandu.
Much.
Councillor McDougall.
Don Francesca.
Cousins. And if the same could happen for those opposing the motion, please? You could raise your hands and then say your name and lower your hand, that would be great.
Castle.
Henderson.
Oakden.
Osborne.
Thank you, your worship. That is seven, four and eight against.